Board of Selectmen, joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Trustees of the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust to order. It is December 12th, 4:00 PM, 4:03 PM, and we are calling the meeting to order. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the Chair of the Board of Trustees of the Harwich Affordable Trust, we are in recess. At 3:55, we are now back in order at 4:03 to join you jointly.
Thank you. As we always do at Board of Selectmen meetings, would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Try to skip a sentence there, Larry.
We have one piece of old business, which was vote to approve the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection watershed permit and Title V Regulation comments letter. It is no longer time-sensitive, but if the draft is now complete, Dan, we will take that up now.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. As our Water Waste Water Superintendent comes to the microphone, you're correct, we received every municipality in the Commonwealth received word from the Department of Environmental Protection that they have extended their comment period. Our discussion tonight was because we were under the gun for December 16th. I think we have a very well-crafted response that staff has put together, but we do have the ability to add to that or send it no later than January 30th. I think the greater point would be because we have a good letter there. We'd just be making people aware that there are more opportunities to tell the DEP what we think.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Larry, you had added some comments. Are you satisfied with the letter?
Very much so. My comments are very minor, and it was well-written better. I would move we send the letter.
Okay, moved in second to discussion. Dan, do you want to say anything?
I don't really have much to add, just here in case there were any last-minute edits or questions, but...
Any discussion from the Board? Julie?
No, I don't have anything.
Mary? Don's off-set.
The only thing, even moving forward from here, that I hope that they would understand is the implications of their numbers. You were on Zoom the last time, but to implement the numbers they are talking about is clearly saying the whole town's got to sewer. And that's what I don't want to get lost in this thing, because you start getting involved with 5,000 to 7,000 residences and everything, and you tend to lose track of, well, how many do they have in the town? So, I mean, that would be frightening. They're having the time, and they're saying something that had never been said before, which is we're never going to sewer every house.
Agreed. Thank you, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I hate to interrupt the meeting. I have a 21st century problem that I have a stylus for my device, and I don't have it, so I can't write. Can you just see if there's... It looks like a... Nope. It looks like a 21st century pen that is of no use unless I have this device.
Now, this is my pen?
Nope, that's not it either, so...
Larry Brophy took it.
Anybody see it?
Is it black?
Yeah, so it's all black, doesn't have an eraser, doesn't have any ink. Say again? Nope. No, again, 21st century problem. All right.
Will someone get the town administrator?
I'm going to have to go analog and use one of these things.
Yes, there you go. I'll give you this back as soon as I can.
Do you like some papyrus to go with that?
Yeah, no kidding. Oh, boy. What happens when you... What happens... No, I have paper. I just have paper. I missed my stylus. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry for the delay. Best-laid plans of mice and men.
Just be a moment while we deal with the pen crisis.
No, it doesn't tip to it, so...
Okay, as mentioned, this is a joint meeting with the Trustees of the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust. There's four topics that we're going to take up, and really, the first topic and the reason this meeting was put together was really to clarify what the trust is supposed to be doing. Really, it's come from my reviewing the trust documents, the meetings of the trust, questions from trust members, and past joint meetings with trust members. It seems we're going in a direction that doesn't quite match up with the trust. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the town administrator, who is the Chairman of the trust, and we're going to start with discussion on the purpose of the Harwich Affordable Trust.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again to you, members of the Board of Selectmen, and to my colleagues, who are... We are officially the Board of Trustees of the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And, you know, that statement right there sort of belies what we've been up against for almost five years now. The Declaration of Trust that everybody should have in their possession, which relates to item number A, lays out all of the pertinent purposes of a Harwich Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And so you can see under Article I, there is the name of the trust. Article II is purpose of the trust. Article III is appointment and tenure, on and on. And so, as the trust, as we... Excuse me, as the Board of Trustees have worked through all of the requirements, we are governed by and we follow Article II, purpose of trust. And so I think it might be helpful, Mr. Chairman, for you and the Board members and the Board of Trustees, if I could read for a moment directly from the document.
Please do.
The purpose of the trust shall be to provide for the preservation and creation of affordable housing in the town of Harwich for the benefit of low and moderate-income households, as defined by the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, or Successor Agency, in parentheses, DHCD, close parentheses, and in furtherance of this purpose to acquire by gift, purchase, or otherwise, real estate and personal property, both tangible and intangible, of every sort and description, and to use and/or dispose of such property, both real and personal, in such manner as the Board of Trustees deem appropriate to carry out such purpose. The trust shall be governed in accordance with act and authority granted by town meeting, as the same may be amended from time to time. And so as we get into the discussion of the purpose of the trust, and if any of you had an opportunity to see my colleagues and I on the Board of Trustees in action, you would have heard and seen that the last item of business that we were talking about is one that relates to the preservation of affordable housing in the town of Harwich. And the preservation discussion was relative to two properties in town that are presently on the subsidized housing inventory, or SHA, list, that is kept by DHCD, and every municipality that has restricted property or restriction on affordable housing... Let me try that again. An affordable restriction appears on that list. So for the town of Harwich, and again, I apologize going from memory, excuse me, we have, I believe, 327 units credited to the town out of the total number of units in the town. So that equates to the town of Harwich presently being listed at 5.4%. And again, as you all may know, there is that magic number under the statute of greater than 10%. So if we, as a town, are mindful of the SHA list and the number of units on there, the only way you get units on that list, excuse me, is if they are units that have affordable restrictions that meet the criteria of DHCD. So we talked this afternoon about preservation. We talk often about creation of affordable housing, and many of you on the Board may know, we've been talking specifically for the better part of a year and a half about what some refer to as the Marceline property, what I've tried to, I believe, honor the wishes of the family, and refer to it as parcels adjacent to Pleasant Lake Avenue, and that is to not insert Mr. Marceline's name, because that's not what it was about. Be that as it may. There are 13.7 acres adjacent to Pleasant Lake Avenue, and the trust... The Board of Trustees is trying to figure out what we can do with that land to create affordable housing. Board members may recall that the affordable... The trustees of the trust fund sponsored a community engagement forum on October 4th to talk about affordable housing. And one of the things that I took from that is there was ample discussion on the concept of workforce housing. And as some Board members may recall, we've heard from council that workforce housing, so-called, is not an element of capital A affordable, capital H, housing. And that is to say that workforce housing does not impact upon the SHA list, and then also would not be something that the trust could presently engage in. The purpose of the trust, as I understand it, is limited to preservation and creation of affordable housing in Harwich for the benefit of low and moderate-income households, as defined by DHCD. And so knowing that, if I may, Board of Selectmen member Anderson and I participated in a webinar sponsored by the Mass Municipal Association and the Massachusetts Select Board Association, and you should all have in your packet the slide deck that came from that. This was a webinar that MSBA sponsored and had members from the Department of Housing and Community Development presenting. And if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make reference to that slide deck. On the second page, or the page numbered number one, because they're including the title page, with the state seal, it says, "What is affordable housing?" And the first bullet point reads as follows. DHCD defines low and moderate-income housing to mean housing that serves individuals or families that earn less than 60% of area median income, or AMI. The housing that DHCD funds primarily serves individuals or families earning less than 60% of area median income. Now, it goes on to talk about a hypothetical area median income. However, we have the data, and I could add specific information to Barnstable County's area median income. And so when we talk about a family of four earning less than 60% of our area's median income, we know that that family's total household income is less than $65,200 a year, and we also know that the rent levels that correspond with that are $1,200 a month, including utilities. And so those are the standards, those are the thresholds. Now, there... You know, that has caused, I think it's fair to say, consternation and a little bit of anxiety amongst any of us, because that's a different threshold. And my take, and I can defer to others that also participated, but my take is this is a purposeful act and understanding of DHCD. They are informing the Commonwealth of Mass through the Mass Municipal Association and Mass Select Board Association of their standard and their definition of low and moderate-income housing. And if we understand that to be the less than 60%, we then go back to the purpose of the trust, and that is the standard by which we have to preserve and create. And so I wanted to, excuse me, just put all of that on the record, and then we'll certainly yield, take a sip of water, still look for my stylus, and answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you, Joe. I'll start with the Board of...
Oh, it is. It's very... It's like... Oh, no, it isn't. That's the bottom of your chair. No, it's not. I don't... It looks like it.
I also lost my water bottle.
Unless it's magnetic, and it is stuck under there.
It could be. It is magnetic.
Tip it over, the ball.
All right, I'm going to start with questions and comments from Board members, and I'll start with Don.
It's magnetic.
Yeah, right.
May I offer my thanks on the record, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Robert Dome? Spotting the little magnetic pen, then I can now use my foolish device. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Joe knows, right after that meeting, I went on DHCD's site, and I sent him something, and he said back to me that there's new guidance. So I set about to talk to three of the proximity trusts. Chatham Trust, spoke to Gloria McPherson, I spoke to Mary Wagon in the Yarmouth Community Development Office, and I spent quite a long time on the phone with Alan McLennan in Orleans. There was... And again, I'm real interested in seeing this all in writing. There was an act that the governor signed into legislation a few weeks ago that did allude to the state's Affordable Housing Trust Fund money that is being poured into developments, but it was specifically for high-impact areas like New Bedford, Fall River, Lowell, some parts of Boston, and they were trying to earmark things towards 30% and 40% development, as opposed to flat-out homelessness. I particularly was interested in the two developments that were done through the trust in Yarmouth on Route 28 and the Cape Cod 5 OPS building that was being converted in Orleans, to the extent that everybody had the same exact story. So I'm still real confused in terms of what we get in writing. I don't really care what the seminar guidance is, because it's such a complicated subject. There are subsections of trusts. There's a state Affordable Housing Trust Fund, there's individual town individual Affordable Housing Trust Funds. Everything on Route 28 was 40%, 80%, 100% from the trust. And Alan in Orleans was saying that they had the ability to go up to 110% on theirs because there were low-income tax credits involved in addition to the trust regulations. I have seen absolutely nothing that suggests that 40% or 60% is the cap. I'd be real interested in seeing... Because when we put out an RFP, whatever that says is what it says. So if we say that it's only for this and this, and we cap off the percentage without actually knowing it in writing first, the feeling of all three of these people was that we weren't going to get any bids at all, because it was too low a threshold. And it was specifically... I get the workforce housing, because there is no definition of that, and it's out of our realm. It's definitely something that Realtors, the Board, and pretty much everybody else has got to consider how to get out of that mess, because I, for years, have been talking about affordable housing as a system where there's a ladder, and you've got two rungs on the bottom where the people who are at the lowest rungs are in affordable housing. But we've lost the next two rungs, and you can't get up the ladder any further than those first two rungs, because there's nothing there to allow you to climb to that level. I consider that to be a really egregious problem, but it's not a problem that I've been consistent with this on the trust that we can address. But before we run off and start talking about the percentages being locked in, the latest guidance on their site, on DHCD's site, and the latest guidance that all of the other trusts around us have, is that that's... It's not capped at 60. So I'd really like to be able to have that discussion with a piece of paper in front of me. And that's pretty much all I have to say about that.
Mary?
I don't disagree with you, Don. Frankly, I found this pretty shocking, because having been to many of the trust meetings, I know you've talked more than 60%. But I believe Joe has asked our fabulous new housing advocate to get on the phone and confirm, is it 60? That doesn't seem like a hard question. It's got to be a number. Is it 60? Is it 80? But I don't know why the meeting Joe and I went to that was run by... Well, it wasn't run by the state, it was run by the Selectmen's Association, but this was input from the state. I don't know why they would give us the wrong numbers and then answer Joe's chat line question, looking to confirm, because he didn't really think it was right either. I don't know why that would happen.
Don?
Thanks, Mary, for that. Partly, what I'm saying is there are a number of internal delineations on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund on the state level. This is something that you have to apply for. And it was part of the ARPA Act, and it got thrown into this part... They're trying to give you legislative guidance on what the restrictions are for this part of affordable housing. Now, I may be wrong, but then if I'm wrong, everybody else is wrong with me. I would like to clarify that, because we are not participating, we have not asked for any money from the state Housing Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the state one, and we're not planning on doing, you know, 30% AMI housing for anybody. Our problem's quite different. We don't... We can't retain lower-end workers, period. It's not homelessness, it's... People are just leaving, because they can't reside here and work here. I don't think... I really don't think that it's anybody who's misrepresenting. I really think it's just a confusion over a change in part of the DHCD guidance that may or may not affect everything else that we're doing. But I do know that the likelihood, if that is their guidance, and again, I'd like to see that in writing, so I can see what it was that they're referring to. There's a lot of stuff that DHCD sends out as guidance. If it is capped at 60, we're in trouble. I mean, because we are not going to be developed... Forget the Marceline property. No offense, Jimmy and I were friends for a long time, so I'm going to use that name. I don't care whether it's that property, other properties, if that's the cap, you're not going to get a commercial developer who's willing to do it, because there has to be an inducement. Right now, the providers, and that would be like CDP or HESH or HAC, who have current inventory are even struggling, because the rents that they cap them at for various AMIs, for clients that come in, include their capacity to pay for utilities. The state gave absolutely no relief funds to any of the providers relative to that. So if, say, somebody's monthly electric bill went up $100, everybody's on average, that's $100 that has to come off of the rent in order to make that total fit the requirements of MHP, you know, for rentals. So there's a lot going on here, but parts of this are going to collapse if that's truly the case. And I don't know that it is. The only reason I went and printed out all these things is because I'm looking at everybody's trust documents, I'm looking at what the DHCD's saying, and I'm looking at MHP, which isn't a government agency, but it still, nonetheless, gives guidance. It's a quasi-private 501(c)(3). My only point is, it may be true, but it may not be true in the way you think it is, because we have yet to apply for it, and we're interested in applying for truly low-income housing from the state as funding.
Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. In an effort to hopefully clarify or clear up one item, this discussion was brought to the Board of Trustees level after reporting out on the community engagement forum. So I think it is fair to say that an inordinate amount of the discussion was, what should the trustees be working on, and what can we do to move the needle on affordable housing? And again, it was an open dialogue, and my concern is, and was then and is now, that a number of folks said, we, the Board of Trustees, should develop workforce housing. And whatever this percentage is, workforce housing does not, in any definition, go back to the purpose of the trust. So I know, Mr. Chairman, you were keenly interested in a meeting of this for all parties to come together, and I know that there has been ample discussion in the community of what is the town doing, whether it's the trustees, or the Board, or any of us, because we are all the government. What are we doing on affordable housing, and what are we doing with those properties? And so for me, I think it's important to put the narrative out there, that whatever the Board of Trustees does going forward, it is in relation to the purpose of the trust. Whatever the trustees do related to the properties that we own adjacent to Pleasant Lake, or the Article 61 from 2019 that we'll talk about later at this meeting, we, the Board of Trustees, cannot do anything on workforce housing. And so we, the trust, need to, I think, reexamine what low- and moderate-income housing is. But the solution, for me, is through this Board of Selectmen and any other way, there's any number of public bodies that the town has, such as the Housing Committee, Real Estate and Open Space, Community Preservation, Housing Authority, anyone where those other groups can impact greatly on the discussion of workforce housing. I know we did it at the trust meeting, and I apologize, but I'd like to introduce the newest... Oh, sorry, the two newest members. So first, we have Brianna Nickerson. If you could just stand for a quick minute. So Brianna is our housing advocate, who started last Monday. Yep, absolutely. And then we have Paul Halkeotis, our Director of Planning and Community Development, who started this very day. And so as we staff start working on this, so I, as Chair of the Board of Trustees, my fellow Board of Trustee members, we must confine ourselves to the purpose of the trust as defined here, but everybody else has no restraint and can work on all those other issues. And Ms. Nickerson, the reason why I did that little dog and pony show, sorry, but thank you, is because she is our housing advocate. She is not our affordable housing advocate. So this board, this town, this town meeting, we've created a role to have a point person on all matters housing. So Ms. Nickerson can do great work on that, Mr. Halkeotis can do great work on that, I can do great work on that as the administrator. But the discussion point tonight is about trying to reset the expectations of the community. Affordable Housing Trust Fund trustees are dedicated solely to the preservation and creation of low- and moderate-income, however that's defined, and that should not be misunderstood to include workforce housing.
Thank you, Joe. Julie?
So obviously, thank you, Don, for sharing additional info, and I'd be curious to understand better how they're creating housing, because other towns are doing more than we're currently doing. And if there's a scenario that does not involve getting any type of funding from the federal government or DHCD, then I would imagine there's more parameters, you know, greater ability to go higher. But this information... This is the same information, Larry, when you and I attended the workshop a couple of years ago, well, four, four or five years ago at this point, is the same info. And I guess, going back and understanding that we're only talking about affordable when it comes to the trust, because we all know that there is not even a true definition of workforce housing. So I guess my question is, do we really even see a scenario, and I don't know that you can really answer this, Don, based on the info you're trying to gather, but is there any other scenario in any surrounding town that they are truly bringing in a partnership that isn't looking for federal, state, you know, monies? Because to me, DHCD is sort of the overall, the top of the pyramid, defining the affordable. And if they're it, and that's where our laws are coming from, technically, I'm just baffled as to how we move forward, because I agree, these numbers are ridiculous.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me start out by saying, I apologize to Joe if I gave the impression that we disagree about where the cap of affordable is at this point, but I don't disagree that we're not in the business of doing workforce housing, because there's no enabling legislation that would allow for that. Now, as to Julie's question, it looks like both Orleans and Yarmouth wound up having at least 100, if not 110%, but it was up to the developer, and the developer got, in Yarmouth's instance, they got $2 million as a buy-down, which mandated that certain things the town wanted from the trust were going to be part of that development. The developer went out and got low-interest, very low-interest financing for affordable housing, building funds. And with that, it's actually baked in the cake, too, with DHCD's regulations, because if you get low-income tax credits, you can go up above 80%. And I wasn't even talking about that. I was thinking that the difference between 80 or 40 is phenomenally big. That's like a chasm. But the idea of doing this as a team is fine. I mean, I co-wrote the charge for the Housing Committee back in 2002 with Sylvia Laffin. It was never designed to just be affordable housing. It was designed to talk about housing in general, and about how to keep a wide variety of it. As a matter of fact, Ms. Two Waystack was on that first committee, so was Bob Murray, so was Dick Gomes, and it was designed to try to find various solutions to different strata of that. And the town has a tremendous history in all that. Richard was involved in the Harwich Community Development Corporation. CDCs were a big popular thing back in the day, and they built Driftwood. I was involved as a first-term selectman with Gomes' way, but they went through town meeting, or they went through incorporation. Here we are today, and we got to worry about both things, because, like I said, we're hollowing out the town to the point where it's either very rich people or people who are at the low end of the strata, some of whom currently in the... are at the low end of the strata, some of whom currently in the Pine Oaks iterations are not going to be in the workforce. They need people to be in the workforce to help them, phlebotomists, CNAs, whatever. So we don't really have workforce housing, and I'd be the first to say, we got to try everything we can possibly do, and that the trust isn't that mechanism. But I, the only thing I don't agree with is where the cap for affordable is. Again, they were trying to address the current problem with ARPA money, and they dumped most of it into the area where it was most egregious throughout the state, because homelessness is a problem. If I am wrong, it's easy to find out. Just find it in writing somewhere, because it's such a complex subject, I'm not sure that having a Zoom meeting over it is helpful, because there are various levels of understanding for the people on the other end of the Zoom call. But I've been doing this for like over 20 years, and I have seen nothing that indicates that they're clamping down and that affordable now means either 40 or 60%. Because it would be cataclysmic to everybody who's trying to build affordable housing if that was the cap. You wouldn't be able to get a developer.
Before I go to the other members of the trust, I want to rein this back in. We're no longer talking about workforce housing or Housing Committee, because it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
So we are talking about the purpose right now of the Affordable Housing Trust. And the way I read the trust is it is a fiduciary trust, and it doesn't really matter if we're at 40 or 60, even if you bump that to 80. And I believe we have some CPC restrictions where we got the money, two payments of $500,000. I believe there's some restrictions on what we can build with that. But the purpose of the trust is what we're trying to get to. And if you read the trust documents, Don just mentioned, Yarmouth got a $2 million buydown. Yarmouth is also a fiduciary trust, and no information's been provided from Yarmouth that indicates that Yarmouth is trying to go out and develop a property. And for us to have spent $850,000 on a piece of property with very little due diligence, which turned into a lot stuck in the middle of it, that we had to go back and take by eminent domain, and now the conversation in more than one meeting, joint meeting with the trust, and in trust meetings, has talked about 60 units, 68 units, veterans housing, workforce housing, and that's where I feel like we are floundering. If we get to the point of the trust, we should be giving money, not buying land, and not playing developer, because we are not developers. Joe, am I wrong?
Well, Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, I believe you're correct that it's a fiduciary trust, but everything else you said is guidance and directive, and those are your thoughts, and it's not my place to say you're right or wrong. I happen to agree with much of what you've said, but, again, these are philosophies that are coming out as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Ballantyne. I forgot you're sitting over there. You get to talk before the rest of the trust.
I was the important part of the table.
Did you slide this way a little bit?
Well, we've had a lengthy discussion, so my remarks are, will be short. You know, we all want to move this ahead, and we're stalled, and that's frustrating to us all. Why look at, and I appreciate the in-depth discussion, why look at the others, and documents from other towns, and granted, they're maybe superficial, the definition of trust is wider than ours. They look, it seemed, a broad base. And the decision comes in, and I think we're confused in two, is what the trust committee can do, or maybe we broaden their discussion point. And then, that's one category. The second category is how we fund it. We should separate those, because I do think we need an overall discussion of workforce on down as part of that discussion, so we can move ahead. I think we need to, we're stalled in this. We can't stay here. We have to get something done.
You would agree that the Housing Committee and Housing Advocate would be more appropriate for them to work on workforce housing based on our trust documents?
That's the second discussion for me. It's a very important discussion, and also one that we need to get to the end of it. There's been some competition between the trust and the committee. There's no need for that. If we define the trust specifically as we do, then we should give the Housing Committee the other action and link them together so we have an overall plan. Because you could have the Housing Trust look at, I forget the numbers, I'm going to use Marseline, Joe, because I'm too old to remember another name. But there's no reason that both those committees can't look at that property and come up with one plan going forward and make that happen.
Thank you, Larry. Judith, go ahead, Judith.
I'll pass to Brendan for now.
I just want to, just a quick thought. It's a really interesting thought. I just don't know, if we own the property, can we, I don't know. It's a very interesting thought, though. About letting another body develop, yeah.
Well, we use the trust as a, in some ways, and maybe we can't do this because of Michael, the way the document's written, but in a lot of ways, I see the trust as being sort of the executive committee that makes it happen. They can take ideas from everyone to do that. And what I'm suggesting is, is that if you work together, maybe the trust then will help make that happen, execute what the plan is. But there's no reason that the Housing Authority can't come in with suggestions of what the plan is.
We are working together, yeah. They're working on a plan, actually.
Right.
Judith, any other thoughts, based on where we're at in the conversation?
Just to reread the first line, if I may?
Yes.
For Article 2, Purpose of Trust. And then, this is just because I spent a lot of time in graduate school in law classes at NYU. So, "The purpose of the trust shall be to provide for the preservation and creation of affordable housing in the town of Harwich for the benefit of low and moderate income households as defined by the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development Forces Agency. In accordance with this purpose, to acquire by gift, purchase, or otherwise real estate and personal property, both tangible and intangible, of every sort and description, and to use and/or dispose of such property, both real and personal, in such matter, manner, sorry, as the Board of Trustees deems appropriate to carry out such purpose. In fact, the purpose of the trust shall be to provide for the preservation and creation of affordable housing." So, to me, that does not negate the actions and discussions that the Board of Trustees has had up to now about what to do with that property. I don't see us just as bankers or realtors of the property at all. I would respectfully disagree with you on that one. And again, I think maybe it does go back to philosophy, but I think it's quite clearly written in there with preservation and creation, those two action verbs.
Thank you. Anything further?
Not at this point.
Not at this point?
I'll reserve the right to...
Of course. Brendan?
You know, for me, I think it's, well, there's a lot. I had the same answer in my last, the last meeting. The goal is to increase the housing inventory, and that's why DHCD is involved, right? I think they're the ones who actually help us get to that. So that's why they have to be involved, from low to moderate, whether it's 30, 50, or 80%. You know, we could define that as we move forward. I don't think that's a big obstacle right now. But as far as the, you know, purpose of the trust, I think that's what it was originally sold, but to me, when it come onto the board, is there's going to be other parts, other committees coming to us with ideas and presentations. For example, Pine Oaks came in front of us in the last meeting, and what they were saying is they're coming up on 30 years. So, there might be something we can work with them to extend another 30 years with them. So it's people coming to us presenting. The Housing Committee, maybe just giving them some more power, but have them come to us with ideas. I guess we get kind of a little bit lost in the conversation, but I just feel the purpose of the Affordable Housing Trust, the answer, you know, is the low to moderate income housing as defined by each of the DHCD. I mean, it seems pretty straightforward. But yeah, are we just bankers? You know, I get that. There's a lot of, there's a lot we can do, whether it's gifts or purchase, the land in Marseline, whether a piece of land is given to us or we buy it, we still have land and we have to do something with it. So I don't think we ever want to be developers. You know, I think we kind of went full circle and said, no, we don't want to do that. So we've come, as we moved along, we're just coming into different circles and coming back to where we thought was a bad idea. Well, it's a good idea, it's a bad idea. So I think we're slowly getting there, but it's finished over.
Thank you, Brendan.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think when we, when we started, we envisioned where we'd be. When the Marseline property came up, we thought of a number of options for it. Certainly, one option is not for the five members of the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust to become the Harwich Development Corporation, by any stretch of the imagination. What I envisioned there is, is that we would perhaps give guidance, wherever the guidance might be, whether it come from other committees in town or the Board of Selectment, and work as more of an executive, that we look down at things rather than do things. But I've been a little, a little pushy in trying to do things that maybe we shouldn't have done, that I would think of as being a developer. But it's trying to strike a fine balance between getting something done and sitting here just watching things percolate month after month after month. I think we'd like to get something done, but having said that, I think the way to find out is to test the market. Yes, we're talking about low and moderate income, and there is a wide range. And if we're looking at 40% of the AMI, we're not going to get a lot of bites, because, you know, money does talk in this game, and we all know it. So we're looking at some variation or some combination thereof where we can get the most bang for our dollar, whether it comes through density, or whether it comes through selling something off, however we're going to do it. There's ways to do it that will work economically, and I think we can do that through an RFP. And when I say an RFP, we can bring that out so we can test the market. Are we all experts at the market? No, we're not. Everybody's got a different idea. But if we get, if we get two or three ideas that come back to us that we can balance out, I think it's a much easier discussion to have about things that are actually on the table rather than hypothetical, and then we'd somewhat serve the purpose of working as an executive body rather than a legislative or an operational body. Did I talk too much?
No.
I felt like I did the same thing.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we get off the subject, because there's other things that I would think that we want to talk about, is, okay, where do we go from here? As a practical way, what do we do other than just going to another meeting? In terms of the fiduciary thing, and Yarmouth was specifically pointed out as an example of that, I know what they did operationally on both Route 28 properties, because I had quite a long talk with them, and I'm getting copies of their RFPs, which they awarded. It was definitely through them. They didn't do the development, but they contracted for the development. I invite you to look at Article 4, Powers of Trustees, Item 2, "To purchase and retain real property or personal property, including without restriction, investments that yield a high rate of income or no income." And Article, and Sub-Item 14, "To manage or improve real property and to abandon any property which the Board determines not to be worth retaining." It is our job to be on the lookout for land. It is our job to be a lookout for developers within the confines of the percentages DHCD is allowing us to do. But it's going to take a team, and the impediment for using the Housing Committee is, these documents were set up so that this was not really within the town and not constrained by the appropriations process of the town. If you start talking about workforce housing, not only a very different animal, but you're going to have to wind up going to town meeting to get approval from the people at town meeting for whatever project you're going to do, which is what we used to do. Habitat and HESH did that for years. We need to build something, we're asking you for so much money, and at that point, it was a cell phone tower money, there was no CPC. But the process is cumbersome. You were then talking about years. I would love to be able to hit the ground running here, but that's the second part of this discussion. What do we do to get off the dime and actually take some practical actions? I mean, I thought we had, at the last meeting, had a to-do list, about two or three items, that we were going to come back and have a discussion about, okay, these are the design requisites that we were hoping to accomplish under Marseline property, and try to start developing a ranking system, because it's not, an award for development is not based on purely price. It's based on the concept of the property that you have in mind for the town to receive. And in order to get to that point, you have to have a publicly held meeting where we discuss, okay, what's important to you, Larry? What's important to you, Brendan? What's important to you, Judith? We seemingly keep, we're stuck in a track in a circle, arguing over whether this document means this, or this document means that. I think somewhere along the line, we got to get off the dime here and do something, because the public is going to come after all of us. It's not, they're not going to be discriminated enough to say, well, it's Larry Brophy's problem, but it's not Larry Ballantyne's problem. And I, point-blank said at the last meeting of the trust, and I invite anybody who wants to see it to watch it, when we talked about the prospect of possibly selling the Marseline property, which, to me, was ludicrous, you're getting back to liquidating into cash, the cash that you had to buy the property in the first place, only real estate's at a different place right now. And I made the comment, and I've sticked by it. The public is getting antsy, and they would come after us, to lynch us, and I would bring the rope, because there's something, something has got to give here. We got to start making some movements.
Thank you, Don. Mr. Waystack?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You're caught in a couple of things, the 60%, the 110. There's a document under the state, the Massachusetts Affordable Housing Trust Fund Guidelines. And I don't know if the Chair is familiar with that particular document, but that document shows, and it reads, "The Affordable Housing Trust Fund is designed to provide resources to create and preserve affordable housing throughout the state for households whose income are not more than 110% of the median income." Furthermore, this also goes to state that this organization is part of DHCD in the Commonwealth. So, there are a lot of conflicting reports. You're right, I'm the public. Start building. And you know what? Town shouldn't be building. Put an RFP out, get a developer to come in and do it for us. But the bottom line is, someone needs to answer this question. There are some conflicting documents, is it 60%, 110? 60, you're not going to get a heck of a lot. 110, it solves the problem that this community is looking for. We want housing for affordable, small A, large A, but more importantly, large W. We need the workforce housing. So somehow, that's got to be worked out. Again, I don't know if it's 110, whether it's 60, but there should be somehow, some way that we can get a determination in writing from the state what it's going to be. Then we can go from there. If the Affordable Housing Trust Fund cannot work on workforce housing, then give it to the Housing Committee. Give it to someone else in town to do it, because that is where the overwhelming need is in this community. So, if your purpose is 60%, great, stick to 60%. You're not going to accomplish as much as others can doing with land that's been given to you or sold to you, that can be utilized. So, I would ask that someone find out some of this information, so we have a written determination from the state, and either develop it, put an RFP out, or give it to someone else who can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Waystack. The town, through the administrator and other staff members, is aware of the Massachusetts Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and that was the agency that Mr. Waystack referenced. And that is an agency, that is an umbrella of the DHCD. Their trust document is written in such a way that they can go up to 110%. That is not the mothership for municipal affordable housing trust funds. It's the state's version. And so, it is different, and to me, that's where you've heard me say many times, words matter. We can compare ourselves to any other municipality, we can compare ourselves to any other trust, excuse me, state organization. What matters, the devil, is in the details of their governance. And the governance right now for the trust is as stated in the purpose.
Thank you. Judith?
So, Joe, respectfully, can we get in writing from the state exactly... So, Joe, respectfully, can we get in writing from the state exactly what that number is for the trust? I requested that at our last meeting. So if that can be, happen, I think that will solve a lot of questions. But I think it absolutely, like Don said, it should be in writing because this is very much illegal.
The town continues to seek clarification of the material in the Mass Select Board Association from November sixteenth of 2022.
Thank you.
Brendan. And just one last thing to, when you go through the website at DHCCD, there's so many different programs. So there's, whether it's 40B, LIP, rental, mortgage assistance, and they use the term low to moderate, and they use percentages everywhere. So that's why it's a little confusing. So if you're going to do an RFP, I mean, we could just do the blanket statement. It's low to moderate, you know, as defined, but, you know, but if every program is going to be different. So it's just something, that's why it's confusing.
And, and the way Joe's explained it and Judith reread, the, the load of moderate income as defined by DHCD should be easy to get.
One would think.
Right. So Brianna's already been tasked with that, so that's our action item. We will come back with that. That's been requested and it will be followed up on. Correct, Joe?
Correct.
Low to moderate income, let's just pretend DHCD was right. And, and I do know in your last meeting, you, you talked to Don's point about everybody in the trust bringing forward ideas and writing your ideas and bringing them to the, to the chairman of the trust for an action item. Has anyone done that yet?
Wasn't on the agenda. We're not too sure.
But has anyone done that in writing as requested at the last meeting? That's my question. Forget about what was on the agenda this time. Didn't Joe and you talk about that last meeting?
Talked about a lot of things, Michael.
But did you talk about bringing forward ideas?
We did. I sent him a list of questions that were, kind of stand, they were actually the questions that we did to put to, well, we were in the process of putting together an RFP for 265 Sisson when COVID hit. So we've got some bases of that. We're going to have a conversation.
Okay. So my point, I guess, is how do we, how, how do we move the needle into Mr. Waystack's point? How much longer are we going to talk about this? And my point about the Pleasant Lake Purchase, Marsline, because Jimmy and I were friends as well, is we spent two-thirds of the money that you have in the trust to buy another piece of land. The Board of Selectmen has talked at nauseam about how much land we own. We also gave at town meeting, approved six lots to the trust. And we can blame the pandemic. We can blame anything we want. But I guess the point of this is, the purpose of the trust, even if it's to sell the land, is to develop low to moderate income affordable housing. That's the point. When are we going to do that? Because that's what I'm being asked. Judith?
I'm being asked the same thing. So I'm going to ask you, as Chair of the Board of Selectmen, can you give the trustees an update on the property of 265 Sisson Road? We were very close to putting out a formal RFP on putting, I think it was twelve units?
Two quads.
Two quads. And then the question of the, the building, the transfer, thank you.
That's been already resolved.
It, has that transferred to us?
Joe?
So, Mr. Chairman, that's a topic that would be under Item D, Update on the 2019 Annual Town Meeting, Article 61 Parsels, of which 265 Sisson Road was identified under subsection E. So I would suggest that it's more appropriate to have it under that discussion unless you want to open that topic up.
I'll open that topic up.
Before you leave this, Don?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you leave this subject, I just want to make sure everybody has a clear understanding here because we keep creating more misunderstandings when we start talking numbers and percentages. If indeed, whatever the number is we fall on, eighty percent, a hundred percent, a hundred and ten percent, whatever that number is, anything beyond that, that's money that's accrued by the Housing Trust, doesn't get freed up for the Housing Committee to use. It is the property at that point of the fiduciary trust, and it'll still be restricted to whatever that restriction is. So you, it's not like you can play better in the sandbox and have the Housing Committee come in and say, we're looking to do something. We want $150,000 for it. And backing up to what the chair said, I take umbrage to this. The Marsline property, we got for slightly north of $800,000 for just about fourteen acres. I have talked to every one of these trust individuals about that transaction, and they were astounded that we got it at that price. I'm astounded. It was good fortune. It was not something that's like pie in the sky that we just decided we were going to go out and buy real estate. That was a moment in time where if we let it go by, you'd be looking at stores in a strip mall there. We have something that we can do something with, and it's a really critically important piece of property. It's bounded by a state highway that cuts across the entire Cape. It's bounded by a state highway that goes north-south, 124. It's across the street from a parking ride, and it's across the street from a bus station. There's only three abutters. I can't imagine a property that could have been created that would be more perfect to do that kind of developing than that property. And I would do it again in a heartbeat.
Really quickly, Don, that property is zoned commercial?
It wouldn't matter because if it's going to go through 40B, it's going to go through a 40B.
You could build a strip mall on a 40B?
You know, Michael.
I'm just, I'm trying to clarify. You just told the public that we could build a strip mall there.
That was hyperbole. I was saying that something that we didn't necessarily want there would have been there. I mean, if you knew Jimmy, I knew Jimmy, he did a lot of affordable housing on his own and honoring.
Clarification question, Don.
Okay, but honoring his memory, this property would still be a lucrative property, and it was severely underpriced, even at the moment in time we bought it, never mind now.
My point and the point of the people that have reached out to me is how much more land is the town of Howard's going to buy before it puts a two-by-four up? Are we all clear, with the exception of what low to moderate income is, which Brianna's going to find out, whether it's forty percent, sixty percent, or eighty percent, are we, are we crystal clear on what the trust's responsibility is? Judith?
I am. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent that you and I are on the same understanding. I'm just, I'm not. And I think because I hear hostility in your voice, and I, I don't understand that, Michael.
There was no hostility. It was getting clarification on whether or not we could build a strip mall, which you took exception to. No hostility on my point. Clarification to the newspaper and the general public. No hostility.
And I go back, when, when you started the conversation, you said, quote, "We are going in a direction that is not the trust." So hearing that, what I heard was that you think we're going in a particular direction. And I, I want to make sure what you thought, you thought the direction we were going in was what we are all saying. Like, are we on the same road?
Judith, the point of this meeting is because I don't think we're on the same road at all.
And do you think we are now?
I think we're getting there. But in the last meeting that we had as a joint meeting, we were still talking about veterans' housing and workforce housing on a property we can't develop that on based on how it was purchased and with what money it was purchased on. So maybe we're getting to the right space, but started this meeting, I do not think we were at the right place.
And I think one of the challenges too, for, for any next steps, so it was to get the plans going, like the literal plans being made, right? But there was also the challenge of the, the properties, the old tax properties that were like in the center.
That the owners unknown as defined in the purchasing and sales?
And that we, we as a body couldn't advance until those kinds of things were settled.
It's my understanding, and I would rely on the town administrator, we fairly quickly found out who the actual owners of that land were after the surveyor for the trust didn't find that. It doesn't slow us down. It would just mean that somebody would have the right to build a house in the middle of our affordable housing project. We don't have to wait for anything to develop this property, nor do we have to talk about buying the abutters properties, which was another conversation in the, in the trust. We have thirteen acres to develop. We have guidelines on how to develop it. And my point at the beginning of this and the reason for this meeting is that's not what the Board of Selectmen in the joint meetings has been brought up to date on that we're actually working on. So we're trying to get there. Larry? Yosse? Judith?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be, yeah. I'm looking forward to the conversations later.
So the, the board members, Julie, any questions on the purpose of the trust or further conversation?
I don't have any more questions on the purpose of the trust. It was pretty clear to me that it's affordable. I guess my only question moving forward, and I don't want to jump subjects, is just looking at other towns and, and seeing how they did get someplace between the trust and the Housing Committee and RFPs and how they could be structured, you know? So I don't want to jump to the next subject.
Thank you. Mary?
I agree with you, Judith, that there's some emotion in the room. And I, I don't put it all on the chair. I hear it in several people when they mic, when they open their comments with, respectfully, I want to tell you, it usually isn't respectful when those words come out. I think we all should take a chill and, and put it down. I don't think there's anybody in the room that doesn't want to build housing. We want to build affordable for whatever that percent is, and we want to build workforce. I don't think anyone would disagree. So let's put the emotion away and figure out how we do that with what we've got. We know what our trust document says, and Brianna's going to tell us as soon as she can get it what that percent is, and we'll go from there.
Okay. So you're in agreement with what the purpose of the trust is?
I, you know, it can't be any clearer to me than what the words say. So yes, Joe read it to us, Judith read it to us. It's pretty clear.
Thank you. Don?
I am in agreement, but there's that whole chasm in between when, where our upper limit is and where the lower limit is. And that's important to find out before we actually put an RFP out and make a mistake.
Agreed. Mr. Waystack?
Just one last comment, and I think hearing you're all in agreement with the trust the way it's written, and yet we still keep talking about workforce housing, yet workforce housing is not allowed under the trust documents as they currently stand. Just an ignorant question, Mr. Chairman. Can they amend the trust document to include workforce housing?
There is a process to amend the trust documents, and it would start with the trust and then come to the Board of Selectmen. Joe, is that a unanimous consent of the two?
If you'll bear with me for a moment, Mr. Chairman.
So yes. Larry?
I agree with Richard's comment. We need to amend the trust.
We'll get to that, but clear on what it says right now? That's what I'm trying to get to.
I'm clear what it says now. I think what we're all in, I take your point, Mary, but what we're looking for now is a solution. I'm getting a little, put off, is that the right term? We keep, we keep figuring out what the problem is rather than trying to talk about the solution.
Agreed. Larry? Other Larry?
If you don't know where you're going, anybody will get you there.
So you're okay with the trust documents? That's the real question.
Yep.
Brendan?
I am.
Judith?
Yeah, I think, I think we're all on the same page.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Joe?
I finally found the answer to Mr. Waystack's question. In the trust document, Article 13 Amendments outlines the process by which any precept of the trust could be changed.
Which is, is it, is it a unanimous vote in the trust?
So what it says is, it doesn't say unanimous, but it says all. So again, some lawyers will make some money. The Declaration of Trust may be amended from time to time, except as to those provisions specifically required under the Act, by an instrument in writing signed by all of the trustees and approved at a meeting called for that purpose and approved in writing by the Board of Selectmen, provided that in each case a certificate of amendment has been recorded with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds and the Barnstable County Registry District of Land Court.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else in the public want to talk about Item A? Thank you. Discussion on the composition of membership and length of terms for members. This has come up more than one occasion. Does anyone on the Board of Selectmen have any thoughts to what the, if there should be a term limit and the, and the composition of the trust? Joe?
And Mr. Chairman, if it helps, if you look at Article Three, Appointment and Tenure of Trustees, and Article Five, Removal of Trustees, those two sections get to composition, composition, membership and length.
Joe, will you just read that, please? Just the composition and the appointments?
Um, it's a long one.
How are the, how are the membership, how is the membership appointed abbreviated version?
There shall be a Board of Trustees, the Board, composed of five trustees. One shall be the town administrator, who shall act as chairperson and shall have a vote. One trustee shall be a selectman as designated by the Board of Selectmen, and the remaining three trustees shall be appointed by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Mary, we just opened up the second topic and, and composition and makeup of the board and whether or not there should be terms. We've appointed now, do we, do we annually change this? Do we set term limits? This has been asked, a question asked to me more than once. Julie, any thoughts?
Well, I do have some thoughts in the sense that, you know, I understand when we drew this trust up, that we thought it was important to have a, a member of the board on. Not saying I don't feel that way, but I also, as you know, have conflicts with, with some of that. I, I wonder if the board should act more as a liaison and empower the trust to have yet another seat. That's not the board, because we're already involved in these conversations on a high level as well. It's not like we don't know what's going on. And we're already liaison to, to many boards. So maybe it's even two liaisons to, to the trust. I'm just thinking that it opens up a, a seat for somebody else at the table, and I think that that could be important. Not trying to disable us as a board. But part of what I, you know, struggle with even as a liaison to various committees is that a lot of times when you attend a meeting, you change the dynamic of that meeting by your presence. And, you know, I mean, you can say sometimes it's a good thing you're there because you're trying to keep them on track on the agenda. But I also think that when the, when a board member's there, they may bring, they may bring some expertise, but I don't know that the trust can't function with that same expertise without a seat at the table. I think an advisory role might be better, but I'm not opposed to having a board member on the board. But I do think it should be changed up, just like the chairmanships are changed up. I think it's important to rotate.
Thank you, Julie. Mary?
I think we've seen, and, and I think of the trust as a committee, even though I know it's a trust, it's not exactly a committee, but it's similar. And some of the issues we've had recently with some of the committees are people that have been at them a long time, and the trust hasn't been around that long. But I do think it's important to have some kind of term limit so you get, you get other views in there. And you don't want to change everybody out at once. But there should be some process that you gradually change out the committee, I think. All of our committees, including the trust.
Thank you, Mary. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Back up first to the composition of the board. Liaison doesn't actually vote on anything and isn't really a member of anything. I invite your attention to Mass General Law, Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Five C, Municipal Affording House, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, Paragraph B, Fifty-Five C, Paragraph B. "There shall be a Board of Trustees in this section called the Board," which is, by the way, another conflict in our own trust document. It establishes the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Trustees, and then continues to use the word board without identifying which board they're talking about. And I brought that up to you before. "Which shall include no less than five trustees, including the chief executive officer," is defined in Chapter Seven, I'm sorry, Section Seven of Chapter Four of the city or town. "But where the chief executive officer is a multi-member body, that body shall designate a minimum of one of its members to serve on the Board." It's, it's in the state legislation. It's not optional. I mean, as a matter of fact, Chatham has all five of its selectmen designated as trustees plus two citizens. But it, it isn't an option.
Thank you. Julie?
That's fine. I mean, That's fine. I mean, if we've got clear definition legally that we cannot do what I was proposing, as I said, I, I'm not opposed to a member on, on the board. I'm just saying that if you're not, if we are required, then I do think it's important to rotate it, similar to the chairmanship, as I said.
Thank you, Julie. Mary?
I was just, I, it was as clear as mud what Don read, so I need to read it myself.
It's legislation.
Too many words, so I just want to read it.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
I have a comment, then.
Larry?
On the side of the table. I just know that I look at other towns, we've mandated in this, the town administrator be the, be the chair. And I don't think that's appropriate. I think that should be, as other committees, be voted by the committee itself or the trust itself.
Okay. Larry?
Change is good.
Any thoughts on change as it relates to this?
I, I don't, I don't know where you should do it, Mr. Chairman, but, you know, I suspect you, you all are far better than I am. You probably shouldn't stay on the Board for twenty years. But then again, Mother Nature usually takes care of that at our age. So... Having said that, Mr. Chairman.
I feel like he's speaking in code tonight. Brendan?
Just real quickly, I mean, the Board of Selectmen, you have us running every two years, so ultimately the turnover for us can happen every two years. As far as, you know, changing the trust, I said this before in other meetings, it'd be nice to put this to the test and, you know, see how far we can go with it before we start changing things or spending money on lawyers to do so. So, at this point, I really don't have an interest in, in, in changing this. So, that's where I stand on it.
Right. And that part of the change, to Larry's point about rotating chairs and vote, would be a change in the trust document. The appointments of the membership of the trust would fall on the Board of Selectmen.
Correct.
It's probably specifically the interview committee. So, we could change that without changing the trust document. Judith?
Yeah, I think... I don't know, I think that the trust can only change the trust. The Board of Selectmen does not have the purview to do that, or do they?
It's a joint, it's a joint change.
Both bodies.
Both bodies change it.
Yeah.
We wouldn't initiate change. You would initiate the change. I don't think there's anything prohibiting us, Joe, from initiating a change, is there?
The declaration of trust may be amended from time to time, except to those provisions specifically required under the act by an instrument in writing signed by all of the trustees and approved at a meeting called for that purpose and approved in writing by the Board of Selectmen.
So, you need all the trustees?
Don?
As I understand that, I made one run at a lawyer with that. It doesn't necessarily mean it has to be unanimous vote, any more than when we sign liquor licenses or whatever, that it's a unanimous vote, but it has to be signed by all the parties. So, yes, it has to be signed by the trust members, and it has to be signed by the Board of Selectmen. Either one or the other says no, then it doesn't happen.
I'm not certain it's something we can get an opinion on, Brendan, if, if need be. Julie?
So, I just want to point out that under Article three, appointment and tenure of trustees, it also says that initially, two of the three trustees appointed by the Board of Selectmen shall serve for a term of one year. So, I don't think we've followed that to the letter of the trust. I'm just pointing that out. I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting any specific change or anything. I'm just pointing out that as we're working through this document, that's something we, we haven't done.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I can't speak to the first year because I wasn't on the trust during that first year, but I can say that that was to be able to establish staggered terms. In, that in practice, the same language exists in, in the ten or so trust documents I've read across the state. The two-year term didn't presuppose that that was a cap, and then you're gone and we get somebody else in. It just presumed that there was a, a stop point where the Board of Selectmen can say, we want to reappoint you, or we want to go in another direction. And that was the term. The one year, I believe, that's, because Chris Clark was here then, I, I do believe that there was, there were two-year and one-year appointments in the initial.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
We didn't add a selectman until like later on. They were already meeting by that time.
As we're, as we're reviewing this, I'm just saying that that's not, that's something we haven't done. And again, we're going to have a discussion on whether or not we'll attend too, so.
I, I was, yeah, I think I had to fill out, sign something so that after the first year, that I want to continue, like you do when you sit on any other committee in town.
Okay, that's fine. I, I don't know of any specific thing that ever came back to the board, is what I'm saying, so.
I don't know.
They were all important.
All right. Larry, did you have any comments further than that? Okay. So, what we got to is what the composition, nobody's made any recommendation, other than Larry saying change is good. And for, and for me, and, and Julie, which Don probably slapped down, but about the legislative. Go ahead, Larry.
I just, I did recommend the change that the chairman be.
Well, that's the, that's the next line item. I'm talking about the, the composition of the trust. So, do we want to continue to allow the trust to just auto-renew every year like we do every other committee, or do we want to consider term limits? Mary?
I want to consider term limits, and as I said earlier, not just for this, but for some of our committees. I think that's where some of our committees have come to the conclusion that the employees work for the committees, and they do not. That's not the trust. That's other committees. But I think in general, it's a good practice to have rotation. You know, it doesn't have to be, you know, maybe it's two, three-year terms. I'm not hung up on what that is, but just at some point, somebody steps off and somebody else comes on. I think that's healthy.
Do you want to bring this to a, a board meeting, or do we want to try and come to something tonight?
Is that, does that require changing the trust document? That does not.
It would.
The composition of the trust, the three members that the Board of Selectmen appoints?
You can, your appointments every, every two years for each member, and you could effectuate.
Just every two years, just don't invite someone back.
Just don't invite them back. You don't.
I think you already have the power to do that. I don't think you need to.
Yeah, otherwise I think you need to change the charter.
That'd be, it'd be changing the trust documents again. That's how I read it originally. I think you already have the power to do that.
I might be.
I'm trying to get to a number so that when we do come up next year, we look at it, and I believe next year it's Judith and Larry, and the following year is Brendan. Do we, do we surprise you and say we don't want to put you back on, or do we try and come up with a number in consensus as well, trying to do? Judith?
Um, I think, because this has come up for other committees too, and I think that there's something in the town charter that addresses that, that, so that would have to get addressed there, number one. But number two, having worked on large projects that take many years to get done, there's a lot to be said for continuity, a lot to be said for continuity. This is not just, it's, there's a lot of material to understand. Everybody that sits on the trust right now has great experience from different sides of housing, which is quite unique, actually, quite deep experience, actually. So, I would just underline continuity, because that's, that's where projects run off the rails.
Don, I would defer to you. The charter wasn't changed when we made the trust, to add trust language to committees, right? So, that, that committee language as it relates.
It's, it's just governed by the Mass General Law.
So, on this, in your opinion, we could change the, add term limits if we, if the Board of Selectmen voted it, correct?
I suppose, but I, I have no opinion, other than I stayed at a Holiday Inn and I'm an expert. I, I really don't know. If you, if you ask me to pin down, I think that's where you do want legal counsel. All I can say is that everybody needs to keep remembering that as a fiduciary, it's not really inside the government, because you can't wink, wink, nod, nod, and say we're not, you're not subject to appropriation in town meeting and other things, but you are part of town meeting. What they do have to do is operate within the confines of state procurement regulations and state personnel regulations that a municipality would, but it isn't a municipality. It's a, it's a thing that you add members to. So, if you were going to look at this like, in a governance way, that, you know, it's the same thing as a conservation commission, it is not. It's, once it, your, your opportunity to affect any kind of influence on it, it boils down to appointing. So, I don't know whether you have the authority without the trust document being changed. I don't know whether the charter actually governs it. So, my answer is I don't know.
Mary?
I have no idea what you said there, but that's okay.
I get that sometimes.
I think we have the ability currently, but maybe what you were saying is we don't, to either reconfirm or to bring someone new in.
You've always had that.
In which case, in which case, we would have to encourage the public, if anyone has any interest in being on the Affordable Trust, they should get that application in now. So, should we have a... I think we have that authority, so I don't know that we need to do anything here. But I could be wrong.
So, according to Article five, removal of trustees, a member of the board may be removed from the trust by the Board of Selectmen by a majority vote after a public meeting or by failure to reappoint.
Or by, thank you.
I just think you have the power to do everything you're talking about without having to really go at this.
And all I was trying, one last thing. Let's say we do kick off a big project. Some of these projects we're talking about could take four to five years.
And if you have a good group that's launching that, to see it to the end would be really important rather than mixing it up. I mean, they go with the turnover we had even within the town, the town planner, or lack of people on the housing committee and stuff like that, it could fall apart quickly. And I think we experienced a little bit of that. So, just keep that in mind next.
And Brendan, all I'm trying to get to is, does the Board of Selectmen want to set term limits?
Yeah, no, I get it.
And it's really so that people, the trustees know that they get three, two-year terms, and then they're up. Not to just surprise everybody at the end of the year with a vote of the Board of Selectmen and say you're not being reappointed. That, that's really the goal here.
No, it sounds good.
Mary?
And I would just like to say to both your point and Judith, you know, I agree with you. That's, that's one of the factors to look at, and you certainly wouldn't change out all five. You might change out one, and if there's a particularly big crowd, project going on, you might not change out anybody. So, I, I agree with you on that being a factor.
Julie?
I, I just want to say the same. I mean, I think continuity, especially where this is a new organization in terms of the trust, and also you have had COVID, so there's been this strange thing over the course of the last few years since we've created it. So, I get that. So, again, back to the chair's point, it's just a discussion about the structure. I don't mean to imply that continuity is not important.
Joe, anything to add?
No, I think everything for that topic has been covered relative to the trust.
Mr. Winston?
Just an observer, as an observer, and having been a volunteer for many committees in the town over the years. I personally believe that you're just getting started, and I think you've got, I, having listened to a number of meetings, we've gone around and around and around, and we're not getting anywhere. In my opinion, we're very lucky as a community to have this group of people representing us in this particular position. I wouldn't even consider making changes until they get better direction, particularly when we're talking about percentage points, you know, whether it be, you know, forty percent, sixty percent, you know? Really, this committee hasn't had a chance to get the work done. They really haven't, and I think this is, this is way too early to discuss changing out the committee. I think we're very lucky to have these people. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to discussion on prospective language changes of trust documents. Larry has made one suggestion, so that the chair rotates. On this one, I'll start with the trust. Judith?
Yeah, I think every committee I've served on, that makes sense.
Brendan?
Yeah, I just, I think it's.
And we're not just talking about Larry's suggestion. I'm talking about in general.
Yeah, just moving the chair.
No, that, that was his suggestion, but any changes is what I'm looking for, that you, board members may want, and trust members may want.
About me, Michael, my, my suggestion is, is that you may vote to have the same chair multiple years, but I think the committee needs to look at that each year and make a decision.
Right now, since you mandated that one person's the chair.
I mean, that would go back to changing the, the trust docs, so you know where I stand on that some.
Thank you, Brendan. Larry?
I would agree with the changes and, and probably the matter of recompense. But outside of that, we'll let that.
Work for pizza.
You can understand that, but not me.
I understood that.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do agree with Larry. It, it's not a slight on the, the present town administrator. The, the relationship has changed, I'll say, from the prior town administrator to this. I used to go to agenda meetings the week before, and there, there was an interplay between the chair and the board member, the Board of Selectmen member, and that is where we could horse trade about bringing in certain agenda items or not bringing in certain items. That doesn't happen anymore. And given the constraints, because the administrator, it's not a manager. The administrator actually is subject to the management of the Board of Selectmen. It puts it in a dicey situation. Now, if the Board of Trustees wants to elect that person, that's fine, but there, there's no choice in it right now. And unfortunately, I feel that that's been part of the problem in making progress, because we continue to wind up being in the queue with other procurements, which, by the way, the trust document does not mandate that we use the procurement office of the town. It only mandates that you follow procurement regulations of the state, and specifically allows you to go out and get various experts in various fields. And we haven't been doing that. We've been doing that in-house, and I think that's slowing us up. But there are, if we're going to change it at all, I mean, there are other things, and I'm telling you, I'm a stickler about bylaws and what they mean and what they relate to and what they point you at. This starts throwing the word board around pretty, pretty much after the first page, after it defines the Board of Selectmen shall, the Board of Trustees will. And then after that, it never puts in parentheses which board it, it means. It just starts with sentences, the board will, the board has the ability to. And like, what board? I, I, I would think of, lawyer would have a field day with this, because it implies to whoever's reading, if I'm on the Board of Selectmen, it implies that we, as the Board of Selectmen, are saying these things. But you turn that on, it's a year since the fiduci, since the trustees are fiduciary. What if it's the Board of Trustees? There needs to be clarification in that language, and I don't know that I've ever seen a document that didn't start out by saying the Board of Selectmen, parentheses, B O S, or whatever. And then the Board of Trustees, here and after, called the board. I mean, but there's no preliminary definition. It just starts running off using the word board everywhere after that, and I think that's a mistake.
Thank you, Don. Mary?
I agree with Brendan. I don't know that I want to spend any money on changing the document, so I guess I'm stuck there. I could probably go either way on whether Joe should be the chair or not, and I'm sure Joe could go either way on whether he wants to be or not. So, I think we leave that alone.
I believe the trust documents say town administrator or designate, so Joe can.
Not for the chair, for his membership.
No, no, I read that.
You get the chair and the vote.
Yeah.
So, you're saying that a town employee would be the chair?
He could, he could designate someone, based on how that reads.
Yeah, that's how I read it.
I don't read it that way at all.
Neither do I.
So, yeah, that'd be a legal question, I think.
Julie?
So, before I really comment on whether or not I want to amend it, trust, I'd like to look at a couple of other, the other towns' trusts, because I think it's interesting that, A, you know, we, we have one board member, and as you say, it's mandated. But, you know, then you've got another trust with five Board of Selectmen members. I mean, you know, I look at that, and I, and again, I'm not crit, I'm not critiquing it. I'd like to understand it. So, I'd like to see more trust documents before I decide whether or not it needs to be amended. Certainly don't want to spend money to.
Don can share those.
Yeah, some of them are on my computer already.
Yeah, you could share those.
I wouldn't mind seeing them either.
Joe?
How many?
Comments on this?
Sure. I would ask everyone to think, why was this declaration of trust, which was... I would ask everyone to think, why was this declaration of trust, which was unanimously adopted by the Board of Selectmen in 2018, and executed by signature of the Board of Selectmen on July 9th of 2018, and recorded with the Registry of Deeds and the Land Court as required on September 4th of 2018? Why the town administrator appears at all in that appointment and tenure of trustees, other than I know that this town took it from another town and erased the name? The irony to me is, you talk about the length of terms and turnover and all of that, and the only turnover that has occurred on the Board of Trustees is the role of town administrator. And so, and I think Selectman Anderson said it better than I could, I get a whole bunch of thoughts. But that would be as Joe Powers, resident voter and taxpayer. As town administrator, I serve because I'm required to do so by virtue of the office that you've granted me as town administrator. But as you've had this discussion on all four points of purpose, composition, and language changes, so that's three points, let me correct that, we're now asking, in late 2022, six months shy of the five-month birthday of this declaration, why it's written like that.
By the year.
Sorry, five years coming up on the, of this trust, why it was written that way. And so I can speak to who I am, where I came from, and how I got here, and I don't think there's any separating me, as town administrator presently, and the discussions that we're having tonight in depth. It's because there was a change in town administrator. And, you know, the change that was affected officially by contract on February 1st of 2021. And so as you contemplate prospective language changes to your trust document, how did we get here? How is it that this document endorsed by, with all due respect, and I'm saying that with a smile, board members who are present and board members who had served, going back to 2018? So this was a purposeful act by the town, through your, through the executives, and following a town meeting, that I had nothing to do with. And I have very certain ideas as to how I should operate as town administrator, and simply that is, as directed by the board. So have the administrator, and I'm not trying to speak in the third person, I'm trying to speak to the physician, have the town administrator role in the document. But if you're not going to have the town administrator chair the public body, you're now asking a town administrator to be a member of a public body that the town administrator serves on no other committee. So it's a worthy question that I think you should all dive into deeper. Why is the town administrator on there? And why is the town administrator on there and required presently to be the chair?
Don?
I do know that the mass general, and again, I'm trying, I am trying to talk in the third person here, and not about Joe particularly. The town administrator is mentioned in mass general law as may serve.
Correct.
And the representative of the executive shall serve on the trust. Well, before you go any further, there was a period of time, and it's somewhat awkward to say this, but there was a period of time, and I think Michael went through that with me, and so did Larry, when we were getting contracts and other documents through, from the prior town administrator, I wasn't really parsing every single word that was being put in front of us. But I will say, I went back to look at the meeting, and I invite you all to do that. The vote came after less than two minutes of deliberation, and the comment was made, well, this was voted for on town meeting floor, so it's just what everybody agreed to. It was not. The article that was passed at town meeting never mentioned the governance as including the town administrator as the chair. That got thrown into a seven-page document that we spent two minutes looking at and voted for and sent it off its merry way to the Registry of Deeds. That's what happened. It wasn't a deliberative thought, it wasn't a long process. There was a document that was about this long, that it was an article that was voted on, and it was more general. It talked about adopting mass general law that pertained to affordable housing trusts. We adopted and accepted that, and at that point, the document got changed in the corner office when you weren't here, Joe, to include that as a governance feature. It is hardly in any other trust. I mean, I could see, and I understand about the membership part of this, but it was never contemplated that you had to worry about which master you were serving either, when you were sitting there. If you're the chair of the trust, you basically have to respond to the majority vote of the trustees. When you're a town administrator, in the selectmen area, you have to abide by the majority of the Board of Selectmen. And my question early on was, and it remains, what happens if they don't agree with each other? Whose team do you play on? And that's where the, that's where the rub is.
Mary.
Unrelated to that, just one last thought that I forgot when I had the floor the last time. I feel I need to clarify this, we're kind of clearing the air, and you've commented this a couple of times, but it used to be you had input to the agenda at the trust meetings. I have attended all but I would say two or three trust meetings since I got on the select board a year and a half ago. And generally, at the end, Joe asks for that. Now, whether you provide him input or not, I don't know, but I think there is a mechanism for you to get things on the agenda, and if he forgets to ask, it's really not that hard to shoot him an email and say, can we put A and C on the agenda? It's not hard.
Don?
Listen, I have no wish to prolong this, because it's basically like sitting in the ER and getting yelled at by the doctor for eating fatty foods when you're sitting there with a heart attack. We need to be moving forward and finishing stuff. But just to clear the air on this, if you were to ask anybody here, relative to that, yeah, there's a section in the meeting that does equate to input, but it isn't always happening. The agendas are, this is from a year ago, there's still open items from, let's see here, the agenda from March 28th, 2022. We continue to ride forward with open items, and I'm not talking about big things, like what are we going to do about getting a developer on an RFP? I'm talking about even, we got stuck with the Sisson Road property, you know, where the wreck building, the old wreck building is. That hasn't ever been resolved. We just put things aside, we haven't talked about Earl Road, which is, we were hoping to convert into cash to be able to start funding buydowns for an RFP. I feel like we're always doubling back to kind of germane, in-germene, things that are fairly broad, like discussion, solicitation of quotes for the Affordable Housing Plan. Wow, that took about seven months. Pretty much all of these things are still open items. We put in, I defer to the board, to the trust members, but they have been, each individually sent items that they would like to see on an agenda, and I don't know about them, but I haven't been overly successful in getting mine on.
Julie.
So back to a couple different comments. I was on the board when we voted this trust. I don't, I'll be honest, I don't recall any sort of big switcheroo in terms of adding the town administrator to the document. I believe we pretty much used what Yarmouth had, and I was actually just looking to look back at that. But furthermore, I mean, I guess this goes back to my question, and I, and again, it's not the first time I would question an attorney or the state. Then if you're having difficulty, you say, getting stuff on an agenda, and you're the Board of Selectmen member, I mean, I question that, because what is the point, then? I mean, if you're on there as a board member, you also can come to the board and, as a board member, and discuss that frustration. I haven't heard anything. So, I mean, before you say that you're not getting agenda items on there, I mean, honestly, Don, I've not heard that. So this is the first I'm hearing of it.
I'm only going to comment because Don turned and stared at me. Otherwise, I was going to follow Mary's lead and be nice. There was, there was an issue after Chris Clark left, where the chair of the housing trust became Don Howell, and I think we can all look back as much as we want, and the purpose tonight really is to look forward. We can all look back. Don was very upset that he got removed as the chair of the trust. I called a meeting between Don and Joe to try and clear the air, and this is where I, and it can't change, but where I disagree and would agree with Julie, that we shouldn't have a board member on there, because it has affected the relationship between the selectmen and the town administrator. And in that meeting, it was not a calm meeting. Mary would have been very disappointed. But we put everything on the table, and we discussed it. And we had meetings after that meeting where meetings had been canceled because certain trust members wouldn't go to the meeting. There has been a lot of nonsense on the housing trust, and Judith and I have had conversations about it in the past, Don and I have had conversations about it in the past, but it's time to end it. And there has been a rub between Joe and Don since that change, based on what the trust documents say. And Julie, to your point, I believe Yarmouth's trust is exactly the same as ours, because we took it, because we hired Bob Lawton, and we said, take the name Yarmouth off of it and copy it. That's all we did. So the switcheroo in the back room, that would have to be proven to me, that that's not in the Yarmouth documents, and never was in the Yarmouth documents, and then it happened. But Don, yes, you have said to me before that you weren't able to get things on an agenda. Yes, I have talked to Joe, yes, the three of us have talked, and we talk about things not moving forward. This trust has been going on for almost five years now. What has gone forward? And I've heard many, many, many conversations about what's going on with individual members of the trust, and I have done my best to bring them forward. But to Julie's point, bring it to a full board meeting if you can't get things on a document, because the public is demanding that we go forward. Mr. Waystack, before I. Mr. Waystack first, and then I'll go back to Don.
There's an old adage in another organization called Principles Over Personalities. You asked a question of changes to the trust documents. One of those that I don't know, and I would defer to your chair of your housing trust, if mass general laws allow you to remove the DHCD language, so that you can, without that restriction, look at workforce housing in the community. I don't know if it's possible, I don't know if it's a mass general laws, I've looked at it, but I'm not an attorney. So that would be a suggestion that if that language of DHCD can be removed, then you can look at a higher level rather than just a 60% of AMI. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Larry, and then back to Don.
Yeah, this discussion went much farther than I thought it was going to when I suggested we vote on the chair. Reason I brought that up was possibly a superficial look, and Julie, I take your point of maybe we study the other documents. When I make a superficial, a quick read of other trust documents, the mandatory, that having a town administrator, town manager be mandated to be the chair is not part of this. That's my only suggestion, is that that could be a trust vote, it could be the, that stays the same forever. I'm not, I think that ties our hands in a way that I'm not sure we intended to. Yeah, I was part of the initial discussion, we didn't give it a lot of thought, we, but now, five years later, there's nothing wrong with us thinking about it now. You know, I really like going in the direction of looking, can we add workforce housing? Those are the two things I'd like to consider.
Thank you, Larry. Don, then Judith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not suggesting it was a switcheroo, I never even used that word. I'm saying the continuity between the town meeting article that we passed here, and the language that that was, and the actual trust document that was signed, there was no reference up until that point of the town administrator being the manager. I do know that they copied it from Yarmouth, I understood that eventually, but interestingly enough, after it left this desk when we signed it, it wasn't until Joe whipped out the paper and gave it to me, because it's kind of really buried in the Registry of Deeds, so you need a miner's helmet to get down deep enough to find it. He gave me a copy of it, it's the first copy I was given, because I came onto the trust as it was already formed about a year in. It does, it says what it says, I've done a lot of research, it is clearly minority of the trust throughout the state. It apparently works there, but it's not really the town administrator that's doing most of that function right now, because they have a department or community development that put the RFP out, and it's going to have to get deeper than we are capable of doing today. But I have no problem working with Joe, and I've been trying to get to the point where we got some forward progress here. But COVID was a problem in general, there's been a lot of problems, but we got, again, we've got the possibility of some units right near where we're sitting, and West Harwich, where we could possibly buy down a couple of their units and start showing some success. We need to make some progress. And this isn't a criticism of Joe or any of the other trust members. Success breeds success. If we can do even something small and prove to the, to the public that we're listening to them, it's a problem, we're trying one shovel full at a time to get out of that problem, I think we'd be going a long way towards solving it. But if we just keep talking about where the deck chairs in the Titanic belong, we're not going to get anywhere. All we're doing is complaining that we hit an iceberg.
Thank you, Don. Julie, one minute. Judith.
Quickly, Joe, I know this had pointed you.
Mr. Chairman, may I be given an opportunity to speak?
You will, yes.
If I may, if I, just a point of order, I do need it, find it necessary to just emphasize that of all the people assembled here, I am the only one who is an employee of the town. And there are comments that are being made that go back to potentially the output and actions of the administrator. And I would just ask for the discretion to please tread lightly and carefully.
Thank you, Joe. Judith.
That's a, that's a very good point, Joe. So there, one could look at the admin, town administrator as being the chair as possibly a conflict, not that he would be in conflict, but the positions, right? At the end of the day, you guys are his boss. If he doesn't perform well as the chair, you know, I mean, that's something to consider. And I know he's had a really busy year, but I know I've sent in many times different things to go on the agenda, and that hasn't happened. And I just can't wait till we get to the other parts in this meeting, because we've been asking for a very long time about that Sisson Road property.
Thank you. What I suggest, I have a very simple process on agenda items, and every board member's clear on it. Email it to me, and what you want it to be.
I have emailed, that's not.
And what I, what I'm getting at is.
They have any view, email, Michael.
If you get, email it to them, and I don't, my board members will tell you, if they email me, Larry, just three weeks ago wanted something on there, we weren't ready for it, so it didn't go on. And I let them know. He doesn't have to put them on, and if they're not ready to go on, chairman decides whether they go on or not. If you think it's a chronic problem, discuss it in an open meeting with a consensus of your committee, because that's who should be voting, basically, your agenda items. So discuss it.
We don't vote agenda items myself.
Well, I'm saying discuss it, and.
I would love to discuss it, I think that's.
So you don't, I'm asking you, Judith, for a mechanism created by yourselves to get agenda items on.
We don't have that mechanism in place.
So maybe you guys should have an agenda item to discuss the mechanism.
We did.
We did.
So you're just saying ultimately that he's flat-out refusing to put your agenda items on?
That the agenda item where we would discuss future agendas was taken off.
Elizabeth.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have another six o'clock meeting. To me, the situation with Joe is that you're putting him in an untenable situation, and what it says in the trust, as was stated earlier, is the town administrator or his designee shall be the chair. Make Brianna the chair. Make Emily the chair. Make. Make anybody else his designee. And that saves Joe from having to work this out. Because right now, you're not being fair to him. I'm off to my other meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just publicly going to say too, I debrief with Joe once a week. And I know Mary has attended almost all of the Trust meetings. And I'll speak for two board members, and then the other ones can speak for themselves. I think Joe has done a terrific job organizing the Trust. I think he's done a terrific job getting caught up on some of the backlog and projects. And yes, the town has had a very, very busy year. I don't, I think it is time for us to move forward and not backwards. Brendan.
Yeah, I agree with you. I would be terrified if Joe wasn't leading us, to be honest with you. He's brought consistency. The agenda items that, you know, I've set in the past, we've talked about them. Some have made it, some have not. You know, he is the Chair and I respect that. But I do, to, well, Elizabeth left. To Elizabeth's point, I was going to say that pretty much the same thing. I would beg that Joe stay on in some capacity for the next year for us to get through this hurdle that we're on. And then, yes, pick a designee, absolutely. If he wishes. If not, I would love to have him.
Thank you, Brendan. Julie, you had your hand up.
So I agree. You know, I think that Joe's done a good job. I have not been attending the Trust meetings. But again, I haven't heard of any other issue in terms of agenda items. So I also think that this is why I would like to look at the other Trust documents in other towns to see, you know, can we relieve the Town Administrator of that position and come up with something better? I mean, I'm not looking to spend money on amending a document if we don't need to. But I can't say that till I see the other documents. And if, to Richard's point about, you know, getting a definition or adding workforce housing, if there are other documents out there that do it, then why can't ours, right? So we may have to amend it to give us more flexibility in what we can approach under this particular trust. But again, I think we all agree that we need to move forward. Doesn't help us to go back and replay different things by previous Town Administrators or previous Town action. So I would just ask that we get those documents, that we review them, we make determinations on what, if anything, should be amended, and that we all collectively move ahead. We now have a Town Housing Advocate. Let's give her an opportunity as well.
Thank you, Julie. Larry.
I think finally in closing, that the two new Town employees are going to make life much easier today for our Town Administrator.
Thank you, Larry. Judith.
I just want to request, you, Michael, the next time we do a joint meeting, can you just please ask everybody if they're available? Because some of us work. And I didn't find out about this meeting until after it was posted. So I had to have a colleague stand in for me.
Thank you, Judith. Update on 2000, oh, Mary.
I didn't mean that in a negative way. I'm sorry.
I just.
You know what I mean.
After Joe's comment, I just feel strongly that I have to comment, having attended the Trust meetings for about a year and a half. And I felt that when Joe took over the chairmanship, I felt it was more open. Maybe not at the first meeting, but after two, it was a more open, it was a more inclusive. The first couple of meetings I came to, I felt like there were daggers coming at me from the Trust members. How dare she be here? I'm a new Selectman, and oh, maybe I'm not supposed to be here. So I would just like to comment that I think he has done a great job as the Chair.
Thank you, Mary. Moving on to the last.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I would just want to, before we leave this topic, just add some facts to the record and let any reasonable person come to whatever conclusions they draw themselves to. But I just want to remind that I was responding to the question of what do we think about the Town Administrator? And I would, again, reiterate, I will leave it to everyone else to decide whether the position of Town Administrator should be on the Trust and should serve as Chair. And I will not be part of that conversation. Because unless until there is a change, the Charter dictates all of the responsibilities that the Town Administrator has and also dictates that the Administrator has roles, whatever roles are given to that person by the Board. I want to put on the record that I became the interim Town Administrator on November 19th, 2019. I became a Town Administrator under contract on February 1st, 2021. And I was named Chair of the Trust on September 28th, 2001. So if anyone wants to sit in judgment of my ability or my actions, I would tell them that I have merely been the Chair for just over a year. And I will take any slings and arrows that come my way that way. But I think everybody needs to be mindful of the actual calendar. Regardless of what the Trust document has said and whatever may have been required of the town.
Thank you, Joe. Moving on to update on 2019 Annual Town Meeting Article 61 Parcels.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not unrelated to my last comment. I would just draw everyone's attention to the packet. And I think what you'll see, and I don't know the order, thanks very much. First, you will see on Town Letterhead what is understood to be a copy of a true copy attest. And this is Article 61 from the 2019 Annual Town Meeting. And within it, you'll see that there are five subsets identified as lowercase letters A, B, C, D, and E. And of course, you can see, as we see with our warrant articles, after the warrant language, you can see an explanation. You can see a Finance Committee recommendation. And in this particular instance, you will see a motion, an amendment, action on an amendment, and a final action. But by way of comparison, I would also draw you to the other documents that I hope are in your packet. Yep, and actually, what you'll see, I just want to make sure you can follow along to the closest. What you'll see is another version. And this was a draft article. Or this was the draft of Article 61 at the 2019 Annual Town Meeting that was in the Board of Selectmen's packet for your meeting on March 25th, 2019. And you will see after it, a memorandum from the then Town Planner to the then Executive Assistant, copied to the then Town Administrator, saying that, you know, please attach these documents because it's going to be reviewed at a meeting on March 25th. And then you can see a document that talks about Albro House, which is 728 Main Street, and a document with the headline of Old Recreation Building, and a document with the headline of 70 Willow Street, a document with the headline Depot Road. And I would just point out that that document shows five parcels and a notation that approximately 122 bedrooms. And then you can see a document that has said Maps Online, Harwich Water Department. And I believe it's in the vicinity of Depot Street and Main Street. And then you see another document, for whatever reason, related to 70 Willow Street again. And so I bring all this up because soon after I became officially the Chair of the Trust, the Trust members had asked me about, why don't we work on the parcels that we own? And I was surprised to hear that because I said I believe the only parcels that the Trust Fund owned were those that we referred to as the Marseline. And the members informed me that, no, there was some action. And so I just want to put out there what I said on the record then, what I reported to a Board of Selectmen at a public meeting, and what I'd like to put back on the record. I don't know what I don't know. And so when the Trust members made me aware of this, I did my due diligence. And I found Article 61 as it was certified by the then Town Clerk Anita Doucette. But as we had a follow-up discussion on November 28th of 2022, one of my colleagues made reference to the properties that are listed under subset C, Depot Road. So if you look at that document, you see that zero Depot Road is parcel J1, parcel J2, and parcel J3. Excuse me. Now, I will not believe in the meeting or everyone's fortitude any longer, but otherwise to say that if you match up the warrant article with the following sheets, that my understanding, and again, was not present and not part of this, was working in another town. That these parcels were vetted through the Administrator's office, through the Town Planner, and with the assistance of members of the Community Development Partnership, who were acting as, quote, "housing coordinators." And as we got into the discussion last week, one of my colleagues said, I remember this. And there's about 28 acres there on Depot Road that we can use. And the fact of the matter is, there isn't. Two parcels, J4 and J6, were removed from the article but weren't removed from the presentation, and my colleagues, understandably so, were working off of the information they had back in 2019. But I want to bear out two points. I was completely unaware of this listing of parcels. And I can defend myself by saying I was the Assistant Town Administrator-elect, so to speak, at that town meeting. And I've admitted to everybody that I went to the first night and I did not go to the second night. And that was when we had a really long town meeting and the budget was in jeopardy. So I was not dialed in to these topics. So when my colleague said, what about them? I did my research. And what I found is that while the town meeting voted to transfer these parcels under A through E, no one in the town took any step to actually get those parcels by vote of town meeting from the Board of Selectmen to the Trust. And that was accomplished a year, one year ago, I believe exactly, because the Board may remember. You folks had to sign all of that. So these parcels that everybody thought were under the care, custody, and control of the Trust were not. And so when we talk about 265 Sisson Road, there remains the issue that I've brought up at public meetings. There is a tenant in that building on that property. And the town has an opinion from Council in 2019 that says upon transfer, the tenant shall be the property, the tenant lease shall be the property of the Trust. And we've talked about that as a Trust, and I don't know that we've ever come to agreement on that. And there is Council presently that can inform the Board that she may not believe that that is the case. So if we're going to talk about things that we haven't done or gotten done yet, that's because there has been that period of time. 18 months, 24 months, and in some cases, almost three years. So since September of 2021, I have endeavored, as your Administrator who serves as the Chair, to get these matters done. But they were not done in the manner that I think people remembered. They were not properly handled. A big part of why I am grateful that this joint meeting is happening tonight is because I feel the frustration of my colleagues on the Board of Trustees and haven't had an opportunity to return volley and say, I'm equally frustrated. Because every time I learn something new and I research it, it turns to mud. So we can move forward on these parcels, but we need to clear the air. There was an understanding that was presented by others who are no longer here in the spring of 2019, where assumptions may still be held that are no longer accurate. On November 28th, 2022, the Trustees, and I as a Trustee, talked about these parcels and what we should do. So I promised the Board of Trustees that I would do some research. Every one of these parcels in 2019 was presented to Town Meeting to be developed for affordable housing. And in fact, you can see in the explanation, the newly founded Affordable Housing Trust will use these properties to create housing for qualified persons. The Trust will explore the ability to develop each for affordable housing over the next few years. The Board of Selectmen does have the ability to transfer some such as Willow Street under previous town meeting action. I understand that, I think I understand the level of frustration that's out there in the community. And for what it's worth, misery loves company. However, I have an obligation, first to the town through the Board of Selectmen, to discover the errors and omissions that may have occurred and take every step to correct them. And then, secondarily, as a member of the Trust, bring the Trust up to speed on that. So where are we on 265 Sisson Road? There are a number of issues that remain to be answered that aren't just the purview of the Trust and that impact upon tenants in that building. And so I don't want anyone to think that everything was fine and it was a simple transfer of power. Because I think the facts will bear out it was anything but, and it was not immediate. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Start with the Trust. Larry? Not you, Larry. Trust.
The other Larry.
Wrong side of the table. The other Larry.
Say Larry B.
I'm trustworthy, too.
Larry Brophy, any questions or comments on?
None whatsoever.
All right, Brendan.
Same here, none.
Judith.
No, I think, Joe, you've found lots of things in drawers, I'm sure, and you've been doing due diligence on that. So my understanding, if we can talk for a minute about the Sisson Road 265. Back just before COVID, we were working with a really great consultant. We were working on the piece of land where the building that now exists there does not exist. And that's where we were looking at developing affordable housing. The tenants of the building were going to stay in the building. And then, as Joe explained, it was, these properties had not transferred, been transferred to the Trust as we thought they had. And so nothing, we have not been able to do anything on this. And I think it's the Board of Selectmen that need to sign off and transfer the property so that we can get going on this. Because the land that's there, we've already gone through that whole process of what we could put there, what it would look like, you know, is the location good, all that. Let's just get it done. We have tenants that are in that building long-term and are amiable about what the Trust had been planning pre-COVID. I mean, unless somebody's had conversations with the theater and they're not happy, but the last, somebody on the Trust, please touch me, they were, yeah.
Yeah, so.
If I may, sorry to interrupt, but for the record, 265 Sisson Road was transferred in December of 2021 from the Board of Selectmen through Town Meeting to the Trust. The outstanding issue is of the lease and tenancy itself. And so that is a bigger issue than just the Trust. It is something that the Board, I think, should discuss and explore. And I would recommend that Council be brought in on it. Because it is possible that the lease could come to benefit the coffers of the Trust Fund. And that could be another source of revenue that the Trust Fund may, and I emphasize "may", avail themselves of. And if we go back to the Trust document, it does talk about that that's one of those instruments that the Trust could have. But that's a bigger issue than just the Trust because I think many people had many assumptions. And I'm trying to bring to light that we need to have a reevaluation of those assumptions and say, Board of Selectmen, what do you think? So that Board of Trustees can take actions.
Put that down in my notes for early January.
Thank you.
Is it in our name or is it in the recreation?
265 Sisson Road, the deed indicates that the land, the building, the appurtenances, and all other instruments there too are the possession of the Board of Trustees, the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust Fund under Board of Trustees.
Brendan, so real quickly on that property. So MHP and Bowler Engineering got together on an old RFP in early January 2020, took that information and did a feasibility study or a due diligence. And they just represented it back to us. The issues with that property is every time we talk about low to moderate, you know, income, and you try to get a developer to just build four quads, the numbers don't work. When you get to 40B, the magic number is 40 to 50 units plus, then the numbers work because of all of the vouchers from the state or whatever state money you're taking. So that's why that property is a challenge. That's where that lies.
Yeah, and then we were talking about if the developer looked, put in a proposal for the Marseline property, could they umbrella it with that so that the numbers do work?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so on that one, I'll have it on our agenda early January. Any other questions related to any of the properties or comments from the Trustees? All right, Larry, bounce. Oh, go ahead, Judith.
No.
I can run down them if you like.
I'm still a trustee.
I'll call you as a trustee. I'll call you as a trustee. Don?
It's not on the agenda, so I wouldn't want to mess up with the open meeting law, but I would beg that the Board of Selectmen, I think it's appropriate for an executive session because it was at one other point, our road property. There are a lot of ramifications to what the trust can and can't do relative to what that property can and can't do. And I would urge us to...
Have that note also.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Larry Valentine?
Very few comments. Joe, thank you for that. I guess. Well, my only point is, is that when I look at the old rec building that we're talking about, our assumption was is that the, that would stay the same, the leases would stay in there when it was transferred. So I appreciate you looking at how we make that happen. I'm sorry we didn't understand that better when we transferred it. But I appreciate you working on that. I have no comment on the other properties.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, and first of all, thank you. And secondly, your present town council who handles land matters, excuse me, has indicated that it is the trust, excuse me, let me strike that, the lease between the tenants that are there and the Board of Selectmen remains in effect because nothing has been done to it. So there's no harm yet, but it is one of those issues that's correct. Yep, so everybody is held harmless at present.
And I believe the lease has another 12 years on it, so to give a sense of...
Roughly half over, yeah.
Thank you, Brendan. Do you want me to run down the properties real quick?
Sure, go ahead.
Quick breakdown. So Oak Street, we did a site plan on Oak Street, and it really doesn't yield a lot, maybe a little tiny house. Any potential buyer would still have to do their due diligence with health and conservation. So that could be set up for an RFP ready to go to sell. Depot Street is another property that has a vernal pool on it. So it could be going down the same path as Oak Street. So there is concern that if we spent the $13,000, $14,000, $15,000 for a site survey, we might be in the same boat. The vernal pool is right in the middle. Could it be for one? I think that could be another property we're considering selling. The parcels J1, J2, J3. Similar situation, a large part of that is not available, and someone did do an amendment at town meeting that there's a line. So J3 has a little sliver atop. So there's potential there for something to happen. It could be a good property to sell to get some, develop the coffers.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just append to that?
Go ahead.
Because in your packet, under Depot Road, it also shows J4 and J6. So those were originally contemplated in the article. They were removed by the board on March 11th. And I know we were talking about the 28 acres, and that's no longer accurate. I also just want to put out there on the record that parcel J4 and J6 still remain as owned by the Board of Selectmen for the town of Harwich.
Thank you, Joe. Next property, 728 Main Street Arbor House. That was actually taken off at that meeting, so that was never presented as something that was being handed over to us. And then Sisson Road, we just spoke about. The three properties that we talked about that we're always thinking about bringing into the fold is Arbor House, 70 Willow, and Earl Street. So that's kind of where we're at with the properties.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't really have any strong feelings about this, but it does appear that we got a gift box that didn't have a whole heck of a lot in it when we got these properties. To sum up, I just want the public to understand, it's not that there's a ton of property that we're sitting on that's vacant that we could be looking at to do something with. We had properties that were given to us, and people never actually were forth... I got to make this clear, it in no way had anything to do with Joe. Nobody made it clear that there were vernal pools and things, and that we kind of slogged our way through each of these properties in our meetings. And the upland, the developable part, after you get through setbacks and everything on all of these, they're all broken in some way or another. As Brendan pointed out, we started looking at Oak Street with great hopes that we could work with someone who wanted to provide some congregate housing. And it went from this to a tiny box that was developable, and it was a really odd configuration. There isn't a lot of real estate that we have the ability to lay our hands on. That's why I keep getting back to the Marseline property. We really need to start getting off the diamond, doing something with that because there are other issues. That is all upland. Everything else that we're looking at has some other problem. And I don't know that, except for the owners unknown property, which I'm hoping that we can unwind, you know, because the chair has made that a priority over the past year. There may be some for the town to put back into the private sector. There may be some that could go to the trust. There may be some that could go to conservation. And that would all be helpful to the effort. But what we are currently sitting on, under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen, is not that much in terms of what we could build on.
Thank you. Julie, sorry, I'm not skipping you, Mary, but Julie raised her hand.
So I have to say, though, I do remember discussion on these parcels. I remember Conservation come in to talk to us. I remember, I believe, Dan Palatier maybe talked to us, too, because the proximity to Wells. And Amy about, which is why really the board has these two other parcels, I believe, and that ultimately, we knew that there was a vernal pool and that that was not really going to be a viable property.
I meant this week, the trust.
Well, and I think that part of that was different discussions that happened as part of, after the trust was formed in public. I'm just clarifying because I feel like we're saying we had no idea, but we kind of did.
So real quickly, MHP did do a feasibility study on a lot of these properties. And for one example, Oak Street, it's 3.2 acres. You would think something could be built there. But you have to get a site plan to see if it's even viable. I think we learned a lesson there. Do we want to spend money to go after this? Or do we just want to do RFPs and let people do their own due diligence and don't spend the money? There is value that is already placed to these properties.
Totally agree. I totally agree with you. As somebody who does feasibility studies for, I know that we knew that this parcel was not going to be developable. So we talked about maybe it was something that would get sold to bring in some money. But I'm just clarifying for the record that we did have some information. Same thing on Oak Street. So again, and I understand that there was some additional due diligence, but I just want to say that, you know, I remember these discussions. And probably that's why a couple of these parcels didn't make it clearly, you know, because the article referenced them still after they had come to us to ask to take them off. So it just goes to show you how much Joe's been dealing with trying to connect the dots. There's a lot of different discussions that happened in board meetings and, you know, public meetings, so.
Joe, did you have any?
I'll defer to the board first and...
Okay, Mary?
The only other property that we've talked about is the Queen Anne Road, formerly known as the Pet Cemetery. That's a fair amount of land there.
Burial ground.
What's that?
Burial ground.
I'll put that on a future...
Yeah, I don't know why that's fallen off the list.
Joe?
Excuse me. Again, for me, for the purpose of talking about this article and just hearing what you've all said, I just want to underscore that, you know, as a town administrator, I pick up wherever my predecessor has left off. And so I don't know what the expectations were from town meeting in 2019. And I am concerned about what is in the public record vis-à-vis that. And so that isn't something that I can talk to the Board of Trustees about first. It's something that I have to talk to the Board of Selectmen about first. And again, we've accomplished part of that tonight, but I want to put it out there. I will do as necessary to accomplish. But what do we think town meeting understood Article 61 to be? Because in the explanation itself, it talks about the Board of Selectmen could do something with Willow Street. But that does not constitute the Board of Selectmen transferring Willow Street to the trustees. So it's an open-ended question. It's certainly a question for another night.
Early January.
Thank you. I'm taking my case here in early January.
All right, any wrapping up comments? I'll start with you.
Just a quick question. Do you, Michael, I don't know if you can even answer it. Is there like an end date for the properties, the owners unknown? And is that something that maybe the Housing Committee and others could work on with the higher, you know, workforce development?
So there is no end date on that. We will be discussing that on December 19th. I would say the end date is probably 20 years from now.
Maybe 30.
No, but I mean, is there a legal... So because we did the declaration at the town meeting, is there like, in the conditions of its law, some...
No.
Some, no? Oh, really? It stays open?
Yep.
Really?
Brendan?
I think...
Anything follow-up, end of meeting, comments, questions?
I think I'm good.
Larry?
Thank you for your time tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
Larry, Don Howell is trustee.
Both he as a trustee and then as a selectman, thank you for the meeting. And you can get back home and have a birthday cake.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, happy birthday to you.
This is how we're celebrating.
Larry Valentine? Mary?
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm all set. Happy birthday to you.
Joe?
I stand ready to call the trust meeting adjourned.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
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 Third.
Take a vote?
Are you going to take a vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
All in favor. Ms. Underwood, Mr. Lowney, Mr. Brophy, Mr. Howell, and Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Unanimous.
All right, motion to adjourn the Board of Selectmen meeting.
So moved.
Moved in second, all in favor. Aye. Aye. Five-zero.